All right, so it's 7:30 and the recording is in process. So I think we have everyone. Welcome to the Town of Ossetonville Planning Board Meeting for September 1st. And why don't we go around the room and introduce ourselves? Maybe start with Valerie.
Valerie Minastro, Planning Consultant to the Town Planning Board.
Kathy, why don't we go with your next.
Kathy Zeleny, Planning Board Attorney.
Sandy Annelli, Secretary.
Ken Ciarcio, Consulting Engineer, the Planning Board.
Jim Lucena, Planning Board Member.
Darren Hoppe, Planning Board Chair.
Carolyn Stevens, Planning Board Member.
Donna.
Donna Sherr, Planning Board Member.
Thank you, everyone. So first on the agenda is the Rinaldi subdivision, 39 Stormy Town Road. And this continuation of the public hearing, is the applicant here?
Yes, he is, Mr. Chairman.
Is it Chuck?
The applicant, it is Chuck.
Okay.
How are you this evening?
Very good, thank you for coming in. Would you like to make a presentation?
Sure, we appeared before the town board last night representing the request that the road be ultimately taken over by the town as a public road. They took that request under consideration and we are tentatively on their calendar for
The 14th, yes.
My birthday, for consideration. So obviously, this board can't act until that decision is made because it affects how the final documents might look. But we're hoping to clean up any loose ends so that the only open item for the board to deal with is the road issue when it comes about. So we got some comments about landscape notes, believe it or not. Third meeting in a row. And we've responded to those. My licensed professional landscape architects in my firm wrote this response. I think most of the comments were agreed to. There were a couple that, I think, one, we had an option, we chose one of the options. And the only one that we really had some problem with was the idea that we were going to do some extensive invasive management plan for this site. And what we agreed to do was trees that were remaining, we would cut the vines. And in the recommendation from your arborist, we would cut them and leave them and they would die on the trees because pulling them down would cause damage. But I think that's really some of what we offered on those comments. The rest of them, I think, we pretty much agreed to do. Including modifying one of the species that apparently wasn't liked. I will tell you that the ones that were recommended are not readily available in the size that we need them. So we've picked one that we hope we can get. But that's why we chose the species that we did, just so the board understands. So that's where we're at. I thought that was the only open issue. So I can answer any questions that you might have. We would really like to close the public hearing. This application has been before this board for two-plus years. There's been little or no public comment of recent. And there is something important to the client to have the public hearing closed. So we would ask the board to consider that tonight.
Actually, we got two new letters, I think, just in the last couple of days. But the other two date. Are there comments from the consultants?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I did provide you a draft resolution. Kathy and I are still revising that draft resolution. So we will complete that and we'll incorporate whatever decision the town board makes into the draft resolution for next month's meeting.
Dan, anything?
No, we're pretty much all set.
We have asked Dan to provide us with the information that we need to go to the Health Department to start the sewer and water permit application. I had a conversation with Dan last night about that and I think he's agreeable to do that. So that's a lead item for us that we can start and that you granted preliminary approval for this project. We have that, that's enough authority for us to move to the Health Department and start that process. And we'd like to do that while we're waiting for the town board and this board to take their final action. So I'm working with Dan to get a couple of documents and to allow us to submit our applications to the Health Department.
Are there any comments from the board?
I have comments. So first of all, thank you so much for addressing all of these things.
That's Donna.
Definitely. Can you hear me? Okay? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So I just would like to clarify on two of the issues on the landscaping notes. The deer protection's not just for deer browse. With these four-inch diameter trees that you're proposing, those are perfect for the deer to rub their antlers. So that's another reason that you're gonna need, so even if they're listed as deer resistant, like, they're still gonna need to be protected from that, what they call buck rub, just like in October. So that's, that's part of the reason you need all the trees to have to have a deer protection on them.
So we didn't, we didn't volunteer to provide deer protection on all trees starting. But we did say, as we believe the species that we've chosen, according to record studies, are generally not heavily impacted by deer. But if we run into a situation where they are, we'd be willing to put deer protection in. We're not offering deer protection around all the 100-plus trees we're planting.
So for that, it's, it's just like a tube you put on it or it's not like you have to do a major fencing for that deer rub. But the way that you'll notice is that you'll come and you'll see and it'll, the tree will be roin. I mean, it's, it's not a gradual, over time thing. They'll just come and they'll rub on it and it'll be roin.
And then we'll have to replace it.
Excuse me?
And then we'll have to replace it. Your site plan approval says we gotta have X number of trees on this project. That site plan approval lasts with the project. We don't have the trees, we're in violation of the site plan approval, we have to replace the trees. We're willing to take that risk. We have professional landscape architects that disagree 100%. And we've offered this board an alternative that is reasonable.
It's very common to put those tree chips on. Very common.
It is common.
Listen, we, I've got lots of projects where I don't put them in at all. So I can tell you that it's not as common as you'd like it to believe in the real estate development industry.
Okay, anything else, Donna?
Yes, so the invasive plant removal is not just the vines. You're also proposing to take out Tree of Heaven.
One?
And that, you can't just cut Tree of Heaven because it's, it's an angry plant. It shoots up like 100 new trees every time you cut one down. So there is a, I believe this, the PRISM reference in here certainly, I think, would apply to that. So that, it's not just the vines, it's also that Tree of Heaven.
So we took that comment last month. We added a note that talks about having to take that tree down at appropriate time. Our landscape architects recognize that.
Yeah, so it's not appropriate, I mean, there is.
It's in full bloom, it's an issue.
It's a time issue, but it's also how you do it.
So we'd be glad to follow that procedure. What we don't want to do is get involved in an entire site invasive species management plan. It's not what we volunteered to do. That's, that's a completely different issue. Be surprised if this board required all their projects to do that.
You have on your tree removal plant, Tree of Heaven. You have Tree of Heaven on your tree removal plant.
Correct.
So those trees cannot be cut down like the other trees.
Understand.
They should be done in this manner that was.
We agree.
With the, with the PRISM.
So with the PRISM, so you're agreeing to do it according to PRISM.
For the Tree of Heaven.
Procedures for the Tree of Heaven.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Perfect.
All right, we'll, we'll get back to the deer protection in a minute. But is there anything else, Donna?
So just responding to, now we've gotten three letters since the last, I think, one was just at the last meeting and then we've gotten two more from neighbors. So I was, what I did was I, I, responding to that, I just, I took another look at your, at your plan and I was just, there's four trees that I'm, I would ask that you would consider not taking down. I mean, it's not a lot, I mean, you're taking a lot of trees down, so four isn't much to ask.
I'll show you.
But I, I looked at, it's, I handed it to the chairman. 1604 is a Northern Red Oak. They're all like right on the edge of your, of where your, the disturbance is, so it seems like it's possible to keep these trees. There's a 1631, a Cherry. 1632 is a Sugar Maple, a pretty great tree. 16-inch diameter. And 1608 is a Norway Spruce, which is a 22-inch diameter.
Talking about these two, I mean, the rest, you gotta bet the rest.
Yes.
They're right on the edge.
Four trees.
So you'll save those four?
Four trees. And as long as I am not, and I'll come back next month and find out that, no, we didn't save those four trees quite the right way. Because I must be honest with this board, I feel like for three months or four months, this has been a continuing conversation about a set of plans that in essence, you approved in the preliminary approval, there was a landscape plan part of it, and by virtue of that granting, you acknowledged certain significant or not significant environmental impacts and issued a negative declaration. So yes, we'll save those four, they're on the edge, I can modify the grading to do that. I'm hoping that's it.
Okay, so is there anything else?
I really don't like your attitude. I'm a volunteer here and I was not on the planning board when that approval happened and I would have brought all this up had I been on the board. I was not.
That's a timing issue. That's a timing issue.
I would appreciate that you talk to me with respect because I do this on my own just for my community. So it's like, I don't feel like, I don't, I don't deserve to be talked about and I would appreciate you changing the tone.
We do expect respectful.
Agreed.
Talk, please, thank you. Donna, any other points?
There's, the last thing, so Chuck, please forgive me. It's, I, and hopefully you can help me through this. I drove past and it seems like there's a lot of trees, like I saw in your plan where you're taking out the trees along the Stormy Town Road to provide site distance for that driveway, which is totally understandable. But there seems like there's a lot of trees and perhaps they were too small to put them on your, your tree inventory that are, that are right along the road, you know, by the house that you're keeping, in between, you know, between that house and the other house. And I was wondering if that, if that could, if you could keep some of that vegetation so that it, there's more of a screening on Stormy Town Road and maybe that would appease, you know, some of the concerns of neighbors?
So to the extent that we, the town has a code and that code requires us to locate trees of certain size, we did that. And you had an arborist verify that. So whatever vegetation is there, falls underneath the threshold of what's required to be located according to your code. That being said, we also have been asked to put in a sidewalk along that entire length. And the distance between the edge of the pavement and the right-of-way line is limited. So to the extent that there's room left and the grading that has to occur to put in the sidewalk that you asked us to put in, and there are still vegetation left that's of any reasonable quality, we will preserve.
Thank you.
That's all we ask, that's good. Thank you. Getting back to the, the concept of the deer protection and any of the other issues, do anyone, anyone else on the planning board have thoughts about these? So if I may speak just as an individual on this, I, I would say that I think by your agreeing to keep these four trees, that's, that's an important concession and I would not personally want to push for that deer protection with the understanding that you have agreed to a three-year maintenance plan for the trees.
Two-year, as indicated on our plan.
I thought, I thought you agreed to the three in the end.
Two, as indicated on the plans.
Donna, I thought you had said you saw three, no?
I think it says two. Maybe I'm wrong. I think it says two.
So we, we were hoping for three, as you know.
It says on line, line 15, comment two, recommend watering shall take place in three years. So since that wasn't disputed, I assume that you had agreed.
Now, there's another, there's another, so on the watering note, we have no problem with the watering. However, we don't, we were not specific because what happens when you're specific is you leave an opening for the contractor to say, you told me how much to water that plant and if it dies, it's your problem. So what we did is we modified your note a little bit so it said, yes, we want this much water, but it should be at the discretion of the contractor depending on weather conditions. Which is a much better note. To protect the, what, a huge investment that we're making in the plant material. Relative to the warranty period, I'm sure that there's a note, I'm pretty sure, separate from that, on our plans, that extended the warranty period from one year to two years, I think.
So, all right, we don't have to.
I can look it up.
Yeah.
I didn't bring, I apologize, I didn't bring a plan with me for that. The weather was so.
What was the recommendation on those landscaping notes?
On the landscaping notes?
Yeah, so I think, I think the lands, whether the landscaping, the actual landscaping plan from the applicant might say two. Donna recommended three. The landscape ecologist said three would be better, but I think, I think originally the applicant recommended, agreed to two.
So I think this is one of our last issues.
But there were.
Not the last issue, I'm sure, because things have changed. But if you can give us that, it's not a biggie, we're willing to let the deer protection go. And that's arguably a bigger expense here. I'm speaking for myself here, not for the rest of the board. Do you guys have any views on this two-year versus three-years? The problem is.
I'm gonna stick with what's on the chart.
Okay. You're sticking with?
Whatever's on the chart.
Okay. That's two, apparently.
Is that two? I don't, I don't know what is, what is on the chart.
We didn't, hold on, I mean, we'll look it up on the website.
Let's find out.
We're really totally.
I apologize, I typically have all my plans.
And I, I tried to open it up, but like the internet is really slow, so I'm gonna have to look on the other.
Go ahead, Donna.
My concern is that the neighbors are bringing up a point that they're very concerned with all these, it's a huge, huge amount of trees coming down. And then there's a planting plant that will take a long time for these trees to grow. But if, if there's a big drought on year three and those roots are not established yet on a four-inch caliber tree, it takes years for that to establish.
And we know that for a fact.
I prefer five years, but I'm definitely, I would definitely compromise the record.
There's a guarantee of two years.
Okay, so two years is written on the plan right now. So what are your thoughts, Caroline? Knowing that some trees do not establish their roots.
I understand that. We already accepted the plan, I have to, I'm probably, I said, we've already accepted the plan, I have a little trouble going back and, you know, changing that on. But on the other hand, we, maybe it's not that big a deal to the developer, we'll do it.
For my client, it is. I mean, he already feels like there's been an extensive amount of arbitrary negotiation on these issues that aren't necessarily consistent with any specific regulation you have in your zoning code over this issue. Industry standard for a landscaper who complains our material for us is one year. What, what you like, and again, we, we're obligated for these to survive. So this is like regulating, the regulating, the regulating. So it feels very arbitrary and you asked me to be respectful, so I'm being respectful.
Okay.
And I'm simply stating to you from the developer's position, this feels very arbitrary.
Okay, so I would make a, one point, and that is that if the trees are well-established within two years, as you're suggesting they will be, then there'll be no issue, right? You won't have to do anything in year three if everything looks good.
So I do though, see, because you're, so these lots will be sold, right? We're developing lots and selling them and the trees are being planted on the lots. So now the transitioning of that issue becomes complicated. So it is a big issue. That's why people don't just do it.
Okay, so you've.
That would be an issue whether it's two years or three years with lots being sold, so I don't think that's determinative.
So it, there was a negative deck issue.
Right, that was a different plan, really.
Look, the, the plan has changed, right?
No, the landscape plan has not changed substantially. No. And your, and your environmental decisions were not. You acknowledged that the plan revision reduced in most cases the environmental issues. And this board decided based on our plan, that's very similar to the one that we've submitted, that had a one-year warranty on it.
That was the person from this board from making conditions of a final site plan applicable, that's both in their authority.
Okay. They really try so hard. I represent a developer who feels like this is a very arbitrary process, to be honest with you. And that's a bad word.
I'm gonna just make note that that one is dealing with seeker and it deals with significant adverse impacts and this is, this is dealing with maintenance of landscaping.
So you're unwilling to yield on this?
No, we, we, I will tell my client that we wouldn't, couldn't move this forward without going to three years. So we'll, we'll agree to change the plan to add three years.
So you are changing, so you're, you're willing to change to three years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We appreciate that very much. And so, and, and we also very much appreciate your willingness to keep those four trees. We know that's a concession, we hand it out. Thank you for it. What else do we have for tonight on this? Any other?
We close the public hearing.
I'm not sure we want to close the public hearing because we don't know yet what's happening with the, the road.
We can close the public hearing. The road determination.
Anyone from the public?
Yeah, I would rather keep it open. Valerie, thoughts on that?
Well, I think Kathy usually has this board.
Yeah, I would like to keep it open so we can take in any information. With that relates to the issues with the town on the next meeting. We usually don't close public hearings until we're ready to vote.
Okay.
It's already been, I'm the public here.
So, good point, thank you. Are there any comments from the, the public? Online, anyone on Zoom that would like to comment on this application? Seeing none. Anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this application?
No.
Seeing none?
No, no.
Who's speaking?
This is an underserved contestant, no.
You're saying, no, you do not want to comment?
No, I, no, I, I agree with, with us again.
Okay. So we can close the discussion for tonight then?
Yeah, I would adjourn it.
Okay.
Uh, Darren, I'm sorry, I just want to give him the two letters that we received.
Yes. Yeah, we've given the two letters there. Okay, so we're adjourning this discussion for tonight.
Till October 6th.
Till October 6th. And we'll have more information on the town's position about the road.
Is that, is that your first meeting after the town board meeting?
Close, to adjourn?
Yeah. Do I have a, a motion?
Yes.
It's the first one after the town board?
And how do you vote, June?
Yes.
Donna?
What are we voting on?
Adjourning the public hearing.
Adjourning the public hearing tonight?
Yes.
Okay, Carol Limbs?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is the, I believe it's 540 North State Road. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak before you again tonight and just want to go over the notes from our previous session. We have provided the North Arrow on the two pages that were missing. We've provided the watershed map. The site water discharges have been addressed. And the other things that were on here have been addressed and are on the plan. What we're here to speak about tonight are the three things that we have sent out to you. The fencing, the plants, and the signs. So I guess we can go from back to front and start with signs because that seems to be the one that has the, that should be the easiest.
Sounds convenient.
Okay, great. So did, does everybody have a copy in front of them of what was sent out to you that has the pictures on these? It should, it should have a page that looks like this, proposed flowering trees. It's in front of, in front of it. Does everybody have a copy of that? Okay, great. And on the last page of that, it has the proposed signage where it shows the proposed signs. Everybody have a copy of that? How are we doing on that? What we've, what we've designated is a marquee sign, the 540 Professional Building with attendance and their phone numbers would be six feet by four feet. Another sign that is three feet by four feet for the corner of the property. And then the exit and entrance signs that say on the opposite side, not an exit and not an entrance, so that we can help direct the flow of traffic since we've been reduced on our, since we have to keep the exit and entrance at the 18 feet. Okay? Is the signage acceptable to the board?
Comments from the board?
Looks fine.
The signs look good and the planting looks good too.
So all the plant, the plantings are acceptable?
It looks, look good choices.
Thank you. Okay, so let's go to the fence.
Uh, hang on a second, so is that, is that it on the plantings comments?
Yes.
Okay.
So, okay, so the fencing, we've provided three different types of more, different kinds of fencing, more along the woods since we didn't want to have the chain link fence and we didn't want to have the PVC fence. What we, I mean, you guys didn't want us to have either one of those, although we didn't see that in the town code. We're trying to help work with you and, you know, we did come here before the town to do a parking lot. And now we're doing fences and trees and, you know, we're, we're trying to work our best we can. So in order to appease you guys, we're offering other alternatives. Because we didn't really get any specific direction from you as to what exactly you wanted, other than what you don't want. So we've provided alternatives that are readily available at either Lowe's or Home Depot. And will achieve, will accomplish the same results, which is security and insurance that children and pets don't go over the edge there. We had used the chain link, to be perfectly honest with you, because it is a way that the snow, when it gets pushed up against there, can disintegrate more easily. And since it's going over the side there, if the snow is sitting there, it would be more likely to have movement of air and be able to melt. Now we're going to be pushing snow up against a solid fence. It's going to make the snow and the ice collect there more readily and remain there for a longer period of time, which is why we had not gone with it in the beginning. So the post and rail fence was not significantly adequate enough for our insurance people for the kids and pets to not go under or over. And so we provided you with three types of privacy fence. It looks like you guys have smaller copies. I have larger copies here that show the fence in, in larger detail, if this is helpful to you.
Yeah, if you could pass that around.
I, I'm sorry, I thought that each of you had gotten a packet of this. So this is, this is something that I thought had been sent over to town. So here's a, one type of fence, here's another type of fence, here's another type of fence. So these are all weather-resistant fencing that is a six-foot-high fence. And giving you an idea of other alternatives that could be acceptable to our insurance company. And not to us that have to maintain the property or the client. Because to us that have to maintain the property and to the client, they're going to be restrictive for the melting of the snow and the ice. But we want to work with you guys, not against you.
It's just going to wind up weathering, they're all going to weather to the same pattern.
Do you have a preference?
Do we have a preference?
Yeah.
Sticking with what we have. For the reason that I mentioned, I mean, we don't see, yeah, we don't see, we don't see anywhere that says that we can't have chain link fences in your town code. And the reason we put it in this location is for the reasons that we've told you. It's for the pets, it's for the children, it's for the snow and the ice. And that's really the crux of it. If we're to push snow and ice up against this.
And if you weren't ordering a residential neighborhood, I'd probably let it go.
But you see, you can't see behind us there. You can't see behind us and what's behind us is not a residence, it's a business.
You're right, Jason. The road that you exit onto is a residential street.
True. But the fence is in between us and another business.
I hear you.
And it's also in between us and an eight-foot drop-off where if, we have a one-foot border there between our property line and the edge of the driveway, parking area. So putting wood there is going to severely restrict the ability for snow and ice to melt. So we're, we would much rather keep something that was open and paint it black, paint it green, paint it something that is less obtrusive maybe to you than the silver. But if we had to go with wood, we've picked the only types of wood that are available. All the types of wood that are available. So what would you like us to do?
Which of the three do you like?
He's asking you, which of these three do you prefer? If you have a preference.
I would say the dog-eared one.
The two dog-eared ones.
As a style.
Yeah.
Okay, Donna, do you have a thought on this? I don't know, should I hold these larger up to the camera for you?
No, I can see them.
Okay.
When you're saying the dog-eared one, is that the?
It's the one with the rounded tops to the pickets.
Right.
They call it dog-eared rather than picket. Yeah. It's a wider, it's not stockade. Stockade is like two inches in width and has a pointy end. This is more of a four-inch in width and a rounded top. So it's more like a piece of wood that has been rounded over at the top than the old-style pine stockade fences that peel and have the narrower boards and tend to warp and twist.
Well, I would definitely go with your preference on this, since you're making accommodations for us. So I would agree to that. But I also, this is going to be also where you have trash receptacles. It would be on the, you know, screening that from the road. So you'll be fencing that also, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Yes, so that, I would be fine if the front door is fine with that.
So I, any further thoughts?
No, I'm checking with Donna.
I have one concern about the pressure treated. Because it looks green, not only in the picture, but in reality, the pressure treated looks green. It's not a great look.
It doesn't stay green though.
It doesn't stay green.
It'll stay green a couple of months and then it's.
So the pressure treated grays out?
It fades very quickly.
I just had my decked on the pressure treated wood and it's already not green. And I finished it in, you know, in July.
So in that case, I don't really have a preference either. I think any one of the three is better than the chain link by far.
I just ask you what the third one is, because I only have this little one.
It's called severe weather fencing. I don't know if you can, it looks similar to the pine dog-eared picket. I don't know if you can see that from there.
Oh, the first, it's like the first one here.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I'd definitely like the cedar or I would, you know, go with that dog-eared one that you've mentioned.
Okay. So there you have it.
Okay.
In between those two? Yep?
Yep.
Okay. So eliminate the severe weather fencing and choose whichever you think looks nicest to your eye.
This one right here?
Or whichever one you can get and you can do the price.
More realistically, right?
It needs to be spelled out in the line. So why don't we just go with the dog-eared picket fence and?
So Donna, are you good with that? Dog-eared picket?
Yes, and I would just like to thank him for making all these changes and doing all this work.
Yeah, I mean, there are reasons that we don't use it around garbage enclosures, just because they get dirty and they get stained and they get, they start to look ugly when they use them around garbage areas, if any garbage ever gets on them. The reason we don't use them in the application, that we're using them along the edge of the parking area is just because of the snow and the ice. So there is a rational use and reason why you use chain link fence in this location.
Yeah.
And, you know, I just, if we have wood there and it starts to get stained by the garbage that is in the garbage enclosure or because of, you know, that location, it, I hope it's not less attractive than the chain link fence.
They'll have to maintain it.
Yep.
Yeah. Which means it washes every now and then.
Yeah, or re-staining.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're good on the plants, we're good on the fence, we're good on the signs?
I believe so. So do I, should I ask for a motion to accept these choices?
Yeah, why don't you? I mean, I made notes of it and then, you know.
Great. Do I hear a motion to accept these choices?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Donna, how do you vote? Donna, can you hear me? Donna?
She's frozen.
Oh, okay. So let's wait for a minute. In the meantime, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Vote yes, and I vote yes as well. And Donna, you're back now, you were frozen for a minute. How do you vote on accepting these choices?
So I do vote yes. I just want you guys to know that it's going in and out, the video feed. So it'd probably be great if anyone doesn't have to be on video, like any of the people that aren't. If there's any possibility they could turn the video off. Not us, but, or something, because the feed is really slow.
I think it's the, it's just here, it's the building.
It's our building.
Our Wi-Fi.
Yeah.
Okay. But you vote yes?
I did vote yes.
Okay. So moved. Thank you.
Would you like the rest of these copies of the plants and the signs so you can see what we're talking about?
I believe this application is getting towards the end of its review. Would the board like to authorize me to draft a resolution for consideration for next month's meeting?
Please.
Okay. We should ask for a motion to that effect?
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't hear what Valerie said. What did Valerie say?
I asked if you would like me to draft a resolution for next month's meeting, since this board, I mean, since this application is coming close to an end.
Can I just ask what that means?
I heard.
I mean, right. Is there any way that we could get it this month? Because asphalt plants close up at the end of September. And we really need to get this done before the winter. We came here for a parking lot and we're still talking about.
I'll defer to Kathy, I don't know if you have thoughts on that.
Kathy, your thoughts?
We can, you know, we can make a motion to approve it tonight. And then we can memorialize the approval in writing as discussed tonight.
The items are so minor that we should do that.
We would really appreciate that, just because, like I said before, we're paying for parking across the street and around the corner. And that's going to start to evaporate on us because those businesses are changing hands.
So we can be flexible too?
Oh, you know what? There's one thing that we didn't finish discussing that I just remembered from last month. The width of the driveway.
The width, we're staying with what it is. We're not, we're not, yeah.
Sorry, maybe I missed that, I apologize.
The, what I'll be doing is, I have finished all the plans. I've finished Dan's comments. And I'll submit them tomorrow, so Dan will have enough time to take a look at them. But we did widen the entrance to 18 feet. And also, I gave you a watershed outline. We also have a 1,000-gallon wet vault on the other side and a 3,000-wet vault on the other side of the building. The calculations are all there in the drainage report. As a matter of fact, Dan, if you would be kind enough, because I submitted the wetland application permit and I justified it by utilizing the drainage report as part of it. So that we understand that we will have no net increase in flow going into that wetland. But Dan has to really take a look at it and see if he has any comments whatsoever. But I'll get it into you tomorrow.
Wait, so I just want to understand that we don't have a final plan that has all this information in it yet? We don't have a?
No, you do have the final plan. We just have to change the fence, the plants and the signage. That's what we have to take off the plan.
Well, we mean, the plan hasn't been submitted yet, though. The final plan.
That's, we're just waiting for this page.
Has a plan been submitted that shows the proper width and shows the proper drainage?
Yes.
That's been submitted. So the only thing that the plan doesn't affect is the signage, the fencing and the planting?
The signs, fencing and planting that we came here for tonight.
Dan, are you satisfied with the stormwater management plan?
I mean, I think maybe the way to handle it is just make it subject to my final review.
Okay.
Okay. Do you agree to that?
Sure.
Subject to Dan's final review.
That's normal procedure, subject to a few items, we always get the final approval.
Okay. So how should I ask for a motion to be worded? Because this is a little tricky, this one.
I would suggest just voting approval, I mean, and then just maybe make notes of the couple of different changes. And just say you approved in the application for site plan approval. And then we'll provide the resolution next month.
Yeah, which will be memorialized in writing.
Yeah.
Right.
Do I have a motion to that effect?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you, Sandy. We have to close the public hearing too.
Yeah.
Unless anybody's here to comment, I don't.
Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to comment on this application at 540 North State Road? Anyone in the audience? I see no one. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
How do you vote?
Yes.
Donna, how do you vote? Okay, here you, Donna.
Shake your head.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. We got it. And I vote yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve this plan contingent upon the changes that have been noted tonight regarding the fencing?
The planting.
The planting and, what was the other one? The signage.
Signage, yes.
And contingent upon Dan's final approval for the stormwater system. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
How do you vote?
Yes.
How do you vote, Carolyn?
Yes.
How do you vote, Donna?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. We heard you. Good, thanks.
Okay.
So just to be clear, we are now going to just make sure that Dan is cool with everything that Chuck is going to supply to him in terms of the final stormwater stuff. We're going to show you the plans with the three things that we've spoken about tonight. And we will be able to proceed and start getting our parking lot. Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Do you think to submit those plans electronically?
And I apologize for you not having the bigger copies. I thought that I had gotten them over here.
No, we have it online as well.
Okay, good.
So you were able to see them?
Yes.
All right, that's one.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, let's see. Last on the agenda is the Capasso, application of 34 McCarthy Drive. Is the applicant on Zoom?
Yes, we are.
Hello, thank you for coming tonight. So, one second. So Valerie, where do we stand with this one?
So the application now is, last meeting, the applicant still had some outstanding items. The application is now complete and ready for the board's review.
Okay. Are there, would you like to make a presentation to the board? Go ahead.
Hold on a second. All right, so we're proposing a one-family, two-story house on a vacant lot on McCarthy Drive. It's about 3,200 square foot home. Should I share my screen like before? Or do you guys have copies?
We, I think we have copies, but feel free to share the screen. You can use a pointer then.
Okay. So I'll just go through the plan quickly and then go on the outside and discuss the site plan itself. So the house, as I mentioned, is a two-story structure with a front porch overlooking east towards the river. The first floor is going to have a main room, great room in the back with a family area, a family dining and kitchen. In the front of the house, there'll be a formal dining room, an office with a pool bath and what we call a flex room, which is going to be the kids' homework area. And to the left, which is, as you come along McCarthy and turn towards the dead end, is a two-story garage. Upstairs, we're going to have four total bedrooms. As you come up the stairs, on one side will be the kids' bedrooms, two in the back, one in the front. And laundry in the middle. Two bathrooms, one is a private bath for the front bedroom. The other bath is shared by the two boys. And then the master suite is over to the right, overlooking again the river. The front of the house is, I don't know what style you want to call it. It's called a traditional farmhouse. It'll have a metal roof around the front porch, over the garage entrances. It'll be hardy board siding with a stone veneer on the wall, under the porch, on the porch wall, under the metal roof, as well as the apron on the bottom of the front porch. There'll be a couple of details, a cross gable detail on the front and on the side of the house. There'll be shutters along the street side, which is this main road, this main view here, as well as the side as you turn, McCarthy towards the dead end. The rear is basically straightforward. This will be a great room, which is cathedral space. There'll be a deck slash patio in the back. And this is just the rear of the garage. The color palette, I think, is, as I mentioned before, it'll be a hardy board, a bluish-gray siding. Again, the stone under the front, covered porch on the wall. Traditional architect series gray shingle roof. The porch itself will be on mahogany flooring. And the metal roof would be this bronze color. The site plan, we submitted some additional info, as the chairperson just mentioned. We have a site plan showing the setbacks. The original drawing only showed the purple line here, which indicates the minimum required setbacks. And so with this drawing, actually showed the actual dimensions that were requested. We also submitted the engineering drawings for review. And the planting plan, schedule, and some of the trees that we are removing is also submitted here. We are proposing to remove all the trees on McCarthy along the backside. We'll keep the front trees, there's really only a couple here and here, and then the public way along here. Again, it's a small backyard, a small lot, and to maximize the space, we would like to remove the trees in the rear. And the only plantings we're proposing this time, again, is the walkway going into the front door, as well as some decorative and, let's call it a. front door, as well as some decorative and, let's call it, what architects call it, you know, something to hide mistakes, but this is not a mistake, it's just adding color to the house, and buffering, a buffer around the AC unit over here. These are all acceptable plantings, I know one of the comments were that they're not native, but they are acceptable, they're not invasive. And I believe that's pretty much our proposal. The other comment was lighting, again, the only light that we're providing is wall sconces in the back on the deck, there'll be a wall sconce on the side of the front door, some low voltage half-lighting leading to the front door, and then over the garage, there'll be a couple of floodlights on sensors that will wash the driveway itself. These lights, maximum range is 70 feet, which will bring, and that's again a maximum, which is, I think, 2,000 lumens with both of them combined, which would be a little bit past the property line itself. Again, they're adjustable, we're not going to light the whole neighborhood, it's going to be adjusted to light just the entry of the driveway itself. The other lights, as I mentioned, are just walls, wall sconces, which really produce very little lighting. And that is basically it, and I'll take some questions again.
Any comments from consultants?
Just one comment in general, the trees, so, the property applicant's taking down 10 trees, that's considered clear cutting, according to Chapter 183 Trees. So they'll need to pay into the tree fund or provide tree replacement as per the code, and it will require a referral over to the Environmental Advisory Committee as required for the Chapter 183. Although, I did, I don't know if the applicant is aware that they will be required to pay into the tree fund, and so, I thought maybe tonight the board might want to discuss with the applicant if there is a possibility of saving some of the trees, especially the ones not within the area of disturbance.
I'll let the homeowner discuss that, but we did get the letter, and we are aware that we're going to have to submit some fines or some revenue into the budget for the tree planting. And I'll have Mr. Capazzo discuss it further, David's around. Because I think we're willing, we're willing to add a few trees a little further away from the house, just again to make it more usable. But maybe if we can just get a clarification of what the tree fund is, does that mean instead of installing trees, we pay into the fund, or do we need to do both?
No, I mean, you, there is a certain requirement for the replacement of the total caliber of trees that are coming down, and then you have an option to either replace the trees or you end up having to pay for each caliber that you're not replacing.
So it's a calculation that you can make and determine, you know, how much you're willing to pay, you know, versus how many trees you want to take down?
Right, or some you might want to keep on the property, especially since they're mature trees.
Yeah. And I would, I would like to just interject that there is a beautiful 40-inch maple of some kind, and I'd like, I think perhaps for everyone's benefit, I'd like to ask you to have a tree expert identify the species, down to the species level, for, you know, especially the maples, which can be tricky. So, and that should be, and that should be in Latin genus and species.
What would be the revision to understand this to have the tree?
Well, one of the reasons is that for certainly invasives, invasive species, they don't count towards the tree fund requirement. So if there are Norway maples, if I remember correctly, it's in your interest to identify them, because then you won't have to pay for that, those caliper inches. But if they're, other than, if they're maples that are not Norway maples, you will have to pay for the caliper inches. So it's in your interest to identify them.
Thank you for that, I appreciate that. The, one of the comments, unfortunately, the 40-inch maple, which is centered on the screen right now, is in the middle of the yard. With the, the trouble that we're having is we're a family of five, children of three, moving from a lot that is a flat backyard, where we spend a lot of time in baseball, jumping around in trampolines with the children and their playset, and that's an area that we spent a lot of time. We've had a difficult time staying in Austin, based on the requirements that we're looking for, for our, our family. This is our last effort to stay in the area, and we're really hoping to make this work, which is what's brought us to home with an oversized lot on a road that's, we'll put being worked on right now, which is great, but it's a little, a little tricky, because we are, we're very involved with the community, Donna, I appreciate you volunteering, there are any other volunteers on here, I volunteer a lot of time with our little league and with the children, but that is, that is our reasoning, it's be able to spend that time in the backyard, playing catch and tag and all those fun things you do with the children. So my, the ask I, I have is, is we, we'll do what is needed and required, taking down trees is not exciting, it's not something that we take lightly. Is there an amount of tree, like, 40, unfortunate 40 inches in the, in the middle of the yard, you guys can see it. Is there an amount of trees that, that could be retained? There's, I think there's 12 trees total in the backyard. There's, as you can see, there's five trees around the perimeter of the back, and two trees in the, in the front, with another two trees on the perimeter in the front. So it's 12 trees in the backyard that we're requesting. Is there an amount of trees that would be acceptable to the board to take down without going through additional steps? Or are the additional steps net, sorry, based on any trees being taken down?
So it's a prescribed thing, I believe it's four inches, all trees above, correct me if I'm wrong, four inches at chest height have to be identified, and then those count toward the caliper inches that must either be replaced at, if I'm remembering correctly, 50%?
That's correct. So clear, the definition of clear cutting is the removal of more than 10 trees, each having a diameter breast height of six inches or greater in a given lot.
Six inches or greater.
Oh, six inches or greater, okay.
So, but if they cut less than 10 trees, what's the effect?
If they cut less than 10 trees, we double-checked it, and that would go to the building department directly, and they would pull the building, it would go, it would be worked through the building department at that point.
Okay.
Because it's not the clear cutting definition.
Did, did you hear that? So if it's less than 10, it goes through the building department.
Building department.
But above 10, then it's as we described. In addition to that, though, there is the issue, you know, if you did choose to cut a majority of the trees down, there's a screening issue, and you would require, you would be required one way or another to protect your neighbor's view of your backyard, and it would give you privacy as well. So that would have to be accomplished in some other way, possibly, you know, an attractive wood fence, which we've been talking about tonight earlier, and/or other plantings that would be acceptable, that would keep your yard as you'd like it, but would provide screening.
Yeah, we would, so just on, Donna, I look like you were going to talk, so I'm going to let you jump in here, if you wanted to. You talking to me? No, Donna, I look like you was ready to go.
I'm, I'm just looking back and forth, I'm looking at your plan, I'm looking at my notes. So, just so you know, like, so I don't, I definitely, we're here as an ARB, and I definitely feel like it will change the view of the, particularly the neighborhood, neighbors, and it will change, it will not be in conformity with the, with the look of the neighborhood. So, I mean, it'd really be great if you keep some of these trees, and I did go by, which was a challenge, is the rose mask, but that, that big one does look like a red maple, and it would provide a lot of shade for when you're playing in the yard, that's sure, that's one great thing the trees do. But I would rootfully, I mean, I just, it's just going to really change the separation between you and, and the, your neighbors. And it will, it will not look like the rest of the neighborhood with no trees on the yard.
You have a few, you have a few trees that are, you know, bordering the property line? I think, I think there's, there's probably a happy medium here that you can come up with, because I don't want to dictate which trees you keep and which ones you don't. But, you know, you have several trees that are right on the property line that you could probably leave in there and kind of, you know, alleviate this problem a little bit.
Yeah, so.
It's still going to need a building, this will get a tree removal, of removing the trees. You know, if it's, if it's, I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, see that, I, Donna, I appreciate what you're saying, appreciate the shade of trees. Unfortunately, the tree in the middle of the yard, any trees in the middle of the yard is a nonstarter for us to get to cultivate the property of the yard.
But what about the, on the left side, you have two oaks there, like, what about saving that 26-inch oak on the way, unfortunately, the road, that one?
Yeah, so, so I'm sorry, you know, what I'm looking at.
And then on the other side?
That, that looks like a nice area.
Right, and then the back, those ones along the back.
You know, have a couple benches over there.
I'll hear the tree.
But those, yeah, where you're looking at now?
The tree's right in the property line here.
Right.
But I think what we'll, what we'll do is.
It looks like one, two, three, four, five, and then one on the.
I think we can, we try and get four. That's my dog, who runs the backyard, who likes to peon trees, I'm sure.
They're going to need a fence anyway.
So you could keep seven trees?
I'm sure he enjoys the trees, for shame.
So if you can keep five or seven trees?
Would you like to?
Yeah, if you can keep the, you know, keep that number, then the number that you want to cut goes below 10, is that right?
Yep.
Right, so, you know, if, if they go below 10, it'll just be processed through the building department, there's, the tree warding will still go out to the site when they submit for the tree permit, but it will not require the, it will not be classified as clear cutting.
Got it. So there'll still be?
Yeah, so right now, I can, I'll, we'll get under, we'll get under 10, we'll keep the 26 and the 12 on the left, add the 22 maple in the back, the back corner.
Very nice.
That'll bring us under 10.
Yeah.
That'll bring us to nine trees to remove.
That sounds good.
But what about keeping those other three maples there? There's, there's like, they're right by the edge of your property.
They's right here.
Yeah, like, so there's five, and then there's one on that six-inch maple, which of course, we don't know what kind of maple it is, maybe it's not a good maple, but that's, you know, providing some screening.
Sixteen inch and then six inch.
So, so, I'll get to the second point of that, of that, of that next, the screening portion. The other, the other, the other trouble is, is that the trees right, as of right now, as they view, are not in good shape. They, I, I know, Donna, you said you, you had gone over and you seen them, potentially they need work just being trimmed back, but they don't look good, they don't look healthy. And I've spent a lot of time on my current property with poor trees and cleaning that up, and again, I have three small children, the amount of branches and debris that come down from four million trees have been difficult for us. So, the trees don't, they don't look good on the edge of the property, they, they don't look healthy. That was, that's one of the concerns. I would be much more adapt to, I'm going to adapt slightly, I mean, much more amenable to planting new trees to create screening, putting a fence up to create screening, something that is visually appealing, but also conducive to the look of the neighborhood and betterment of our environment. But with these, these trees that are in those at the back, they, they look, they look rough right now. And maybe that's because they haven't been, they've been upkept, right, this wasn't a kept-up property, and now, now you're seeing it more, but they, they look rough.
So.
That's a really good idea.
Why doesn't the applicant look at the landscaping plan and then come back with revisions? Because also, as you noted before, that some of these maples might not be sugar maples, they could be Norway maples as well, and that would be also something of interest to the board.
Yeah, I, I drove by, I, I'm guessing that that 40-inch one is a red maple, so that would, that is not a Nor, that's definitely not a Norway maple, 40-inch.
Okay, so, as the applicant, you're clear that, about the tree regulations, right? If you can get it down to below 10 that you're cutting, then it's no longer a concern of our board, it goes to the, to the building department. And then with them, you can calculate, you know, the costs of, you know, various cutting schemes, and please do come back with a, a new landscape plan that includes screening and, you know, replanting as, as you, as you think will, will benefit with you and your neighbor and the overall look of the neighborhood. Does that sound reasonable?
If I could, if I could ask a clarification, if I, if I asked a clarification there, the ask is that if it goes under the 10, and it does go to this, this board, so I'm telling you now, it's going to go under 10, so then is there, what's the reasoning that we have to come back to this board now? I'm not, I don't want, I'm not challenging it, I'm just.
The board, the board still, the board still looks at landscaping plans, but you no longer need to pull a tree permit, with the board no longer has the authority to issue the tree permit that runs through the building department at that point.
This part of the ARB authority, it's still has the authority to look at landscaping issues. It just doesn't rise to the level that you necessarily have to contribute to a fund or the mandatory replacement, but we could, we still need a landscaping plan, and still, and the board can still require screening.
Okay.
So, may I comment on the other question?
So, before we tell you that we're going to keep the.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Donna.
No, no, I, you finish your thought.
No, no, I'll, I'll listen.
I was going to change gears, so you should finish your thought.
So what I'd like to, to recommend is, is that we will, we will get under the, if I can tell you that we're going to get under the 10, and we provide, what's an acceptable screening that we provide? Is it a fence, is it more trees? What's acceptable so that when we come back to the board, we're able to, to start to move forward? We're, we're going to get into October, and then we can't move forward in October, we're going to get into November, and then that's going to push us to March, before we're able to start work. We're just going to pitch us really close, you know, really before they take the screening.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, my comment would be that, that, you know, six-foot fence, which is, I believe, what is permissible, and, and the code is not going to screen, offer screening for your neighbors when you're taking down these large trees. So, in my opinion, just one board member, I, I do think there should be at least some trees to offer screening for your neighbors.
Other board members? Carolyn, what do you think?
I have to go out and look at the property court, I don't even have that.
Okay. Would it be possible to arrange a, a site visit, so that we could see the property, ideally with, with you guys, and, and I've got a feeling for it.
Board? Yeah, let's do it. That sounds great.
Jim?
We'd love the, the input, you know, we'd love to get this to, to, to look.
We'd love the input, you know, we'd love to get this to, to look correct, and, you know, I think that we have mutual interests in volunteer, so I just want, you know, to do the best in both, in both interests, that would be ideal for us.
I've, I've been to the site, and I don't think it's a requirement to put up a fence, and I'm certainly not going to, I certainly don't want to dictate to you one way or the other. I'd rather have it come, come from you, but, you know, making an effort to, you know, screen your neighbors will benefit you as well as the neighborhood, and we're supposed to be taking all that into account. So, I'd love for you to, you know, propose what you're comfortable with, and go from there.
Okay.
We'll go over it, David. I think it's going to be a combination of trees and fence, because this is also a front yard here, as I mentioned before, so we really can't do a 6-foot fence all the way to this corner on the side here. So, it's going to have to stop somewhere along where this pine is. So, again, like Donna said, a fence alone is not going to block your neighbor's view or your view into your neighbors, so...
And that's certainly not a requirement for you to do that, that's why I'm saying...
Well, I'm just saying, for David's, I mean, just for the benefit of everyone, I think, a fence and some trees, whether we keep some of them or add some in this corner might work out for you.
Right, I've driven by there as well, and you might want to extend that fence along there to give you some screening from there, from your neighbor's driveway, which, when I went by, had a few cars in it, so...
Right, that's what I'm saying, but you can't do a 6-foot fence.
Mutual, yeah.
You can't do a 6-foot around from here to the street, because this is technically a front yard here.
Oh, is that correct?
So, we'll be able to do a 6-foot fence in the front, which is why I'm thinking some trees here, whether we keep these two or add some. David and I will go over it and submit it. Is this going to be open to the public next go around?
Yeah.
So, if you want to call for a public hearing, we can do that tonight.
Okay, yeah, we can open the public hearing tonight.
No, a call for a public hearing.
A call for, sorry, we have to notice it, and then, so at the next meeting, it'll be a public hearing. So, do I have a motion to call?
I have another comment about the other plantings, so...
Okay, go ahead, we'll do that after.
It'd be really great if you left those out. So, it is, it is not just, you know, there is an issue that you want to sort of, you want to keep the flavor of the, of the neighborhood, which is a really nice neighborhood, you're going to, I think you're going to be really happy there with your lawn. So, having those trees are important to that, because you don't want it to look like a brand-new subdivision, which is, you know, which it's not. The other, I guess I have a question, maybe Kathy could help me with this. So, they proposed on this plan of specific perennials, oh, and end boxes. So, that's not usually, so I'm not sure how this goes, but if that's on the plan, do they always have to stay with that? Because that would seem, if I were to, like, say they were to sell this house years and years and years from now, and someone else buys, buys the house, then this, these perennials being on this site plan, is that, is that something like that they have to always adhere to?
No.
No.
It's not a site, it's a plant, although it's... But it would be held to that, right? They could change?
Yes.
Those plants could be changed at some point?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't think you might not.
Yes.
That's one of the reasons why a question even doing a landscape plan, I mean, it's a residential, and again, switching owners year to year, these plans are not going to remain.
You're getting the approval to do, you know...
No, I understand, it's for the other stuff.
But I want a restrictive covenant, that you have to keep these... Okay, I just wanted to clarify, because they, there's, it's a strange combination of these materials, because they require different cultural conditions, so I'm not really sure that they're going to do very well. But in any case, the grass is for shade, it's obvious for sun, so it's going to be a little bit complicated. But, and, you know, from ARB perspective, I'm not really sure how much that blends in with the neighborhood, but I'm, I'm definitely more concerned about the trees and that screening.
Any other comments?
I also wanted to ask about the lighting, like, you have the lighting by the walkway, you have a lot of those little lights, doesn't that seem like that's a lot of lights?
You know, when I drive by houses and I see a lot of these little lights, it bothers me too.
Yes, yes.
But these, I believe, are spaced five feet apart, they're not like what I've seen, I think they're five, they might be four.
It still seems like a lot, yeah, on both sides, because I, there's, there's a, there's a house that I...
It really depends on the height and what type of light, too, we can reduce that, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's probably nice. There's, there's one house that went up in the village of Austin, that it looks like an airport, I mean, it's, they put them all the way around the perimeter, and they put them along all, every...
They got a deal, I hope we will, just put them all.
Yeah, so it'd be great if you could reduce those, and on the, one of the sconces, and then the other lights, are they downward facing lights?
Which ones?
Basically, all of them, all the outdoor lights, are they downward facing?
Wall sconces, these?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we haven't really selected lighting yet for the wall sconces.
Because it looks like it's facing upward, and it'd be really great...
Well, that's just a symbol showing the wall sconce.
Right, that's why I'm asking, yeah, so it'd be great if it could be downward facing, because it's just less obtrusive, and it looks...
Yeah, there, it's, I mean, I doubt it's going to be straight forward facing, it's going to be up and down facing, I mean, especially this one to light up the stone there, so it's not going to be forward facing, because this porch is going to have a couple of downlights here as well, in the ceiling.
Right, so down, facing down is ideal, so it's not lighting up the sky, yeah. That was it for me.
Any other comments from the board?
The rest of the house looks really beautiful.
Carolyn?
No.
Jim?
Nope.
Okay, any other from the consultants? Valerie? Dan?
I just had a couple of minor engineering comments, which I'll pass along to their engineering consultants.
Okay, okay, great. So, I think we're ready to seek a motion to open a public hearing for the October 6 meeting.
Set a public hearing, yes.
Set a public hearing.
To set a public hearing, yeah. Do I have a motion?
I believe that we set a public hearing for October 6.
Second.
And how do you vote, Jess? How do you vote, Carolyn?
Yes.
How do you vote, Donna?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So, we will do that. And if there's nothing else, then we'll adjourn this for tonight, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, are we going to adjourn into executive session? Kathy?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're about...
I was asking you about adjourning away from this application.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes, you're adjourning this application, sorry, I thought you meant adjourning the meeting.
No, 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 not yet, not yet.
Sorry, I was like, wait a second, wait, you said... No, sorry, yes, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Donna, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
And yes, here as well. Thank you, applicants.
Thank you.
And we'll see you at the October 6 meeting, looking forward.
Great.
So, do I hear a motion to adjourn into executive session, and to follow that...
I think Kathy's wanting to say something.
Okay, Kathy, go ahead.
And then we'll adjourn directly out of executive session.
Okay.
For advice of counsel.
For advice of counsel.
And of litigation.
Yes, so I'll make a motion that we go into executive session to hear advice of counsel on litigation, and to, and from that, we adjourn directly.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, how do you vote, Donna?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Motion passes, and thank you very much, and we can stop the recording.